On the 2019-2020 school budget, if everybody could please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Wall Township Board of Education's special meeting to hold a public hearing on the 2019-2020 annual school budget. Adequate notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by a notice to CoStar, written notice to the Asbury Park Press, all Wall Township public schools, and a posting copy of the notice in the Board Administration office on April 18, 2019. Let's take a roll call. Mr. Adenizio.
Here.
Mr. MacArthur.
Here.
Ms. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Sam Filippo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
Mr. Wondrack. Ms. Swanyak.
Here.
Ms. Connell.
Here. Mrs. Dyer is going to take over and do a presentation on the budget. I'm going to ask the board members to go move there since the presentation is behind us so that we can view it better and we're not blocking the audience from seeing it.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the public hearing on the budget. Just a little reminder, the budgeting process begins in the fall with stakeholder input from teachers to administration and then the administrators to central office. You can see all of the dates on this slide for meetings that were related to budget development. The Finance and Facility Committee meetings in January, February, March, and April. There were budget presentations that were specific to the budget at workshop meetings of the Board in February and in April and March. Sorry about that. We received the notice of state aid in March. We had budget discussions at the regular meetings of the Board of Education and the Board approved the tentative budget on March 19 of 2019. The goals of the budget are always to provide the funds necessary to achieve Board goals and district goals, ensure appropriate staffing, which considers the enrollment parameters, student needs, special education programs, and the neighborhood schools, to meet the federal and state guidelines and the requirements of any corrective action plans or other plans submitted to the county, maintain and improve programs, address declining infrastructure, address aging technology, address our upcoming transportation deadlines, and plan for a settlement of the WTEA collective bargaining agreement. There are many of the Board goals have budget implications, so ensuring implementation and monitoring of the strategic plan, negotiating and settling contracts, not just with the bargaining units but also with nonrepresented personnel. The goal was to accomplish that by March and we are not quite there yet. Working with the superintendent to ensure that all students are academically challenged in ways that are aligned with their potential and interests, developing plans for the implementation of programs and courses for September 2019 and beyond, continuing to investigate and implement short and long-term solutions for student transportation, ensuring that the members of the Board receive training that enhances their role or performance as Board members, planning for potential changes in enrollment, and reviewing the long-range facilities plan and comprehensive maintenance plan, developing and maintaining a prioritized list of facility improvements. These are the district goals that are aligned to the strategic plan. We are in year two of the strategic plan, so we're now planning for year three. The first goal has to do with curriculum and you can see that there is a minimum of $254,000 in the budget that's devoted to that. Some of that is for summer work for curriculum development, a formative, digital formative assessment for teachers and students, workshops and professional development for teachers and other professional staff, workshops and professional development for administrators, tuition reimbursement for teachers, which is part of the collective bargaining agreement, and $22,985 to support novice teachers. That's part of the mentoring plan, which is also part of the collective bargaining agreement and New Jersey State Administrative Code. With regard to the second district goal, this has to do with providing a variety of programs that promote high levels of engagement and training, learning rather, both academically, socially, and emotionally. There's at least $31 million in the budget that is linked to this goal, and you'll see that there's some overlap of goals and some overlap of spending. But in particular, at the high school, we have 20 AP classes, five different academies as of next year, the Wall Business and Finance Academy, the Pre-Engineering Academy, Crimson College, the Service and Leadership Academy, and our newest academy in performing arts with the first strand being in music. We have 134 electives, 48 clubs, 54 NJ SIA teams, and we offer 31 different athletic offerings. At the intermediate school, we have accelerated and advanced-level classes in math and language arts, three different world language choices, 24 elective offerings, 26 clubs, 11 sports, and three seasons of intramural programs. At the elementary schools, students have exposure to art, music with both vocal and instrumental, technology, world languages, and we have robust transition program from fifth to sixth grade. Salaries for teachers is more than $28 million. Salaries for counselors rather, 642, 275. Nurses and our school physician is just under $600,000. Coaches and club advisors is 869,000. Elementary, the elementary morning music program is $75,000 and salaries for supervisors, 731, 486. The other district goal linked to the budget has to do with technology and enhancing critical thinking, communication, creativity, and collaboration. There's at least $815,000 devoted to that. The budget includes purchasing Chromebooks and cases for high school students to complete a one-to-one carry-home initiative. That's $165,000 in the budget. Technology instruction at the elementary schools, the intermediate school, and the high school. The other district goal has to do with being fiscally responsible and scheduling maintenance and infrastructure improvements. And to that end, we have about $6 million in the budget. HVAC improvements, phase two of that air conditioning project is $2,747,000. We're replacing a roof at the operations building, five buses and two vans, the smoke detector head replacement at the high school, painting the exterior of Wall West Belmar, masonry repairs at the primary school, door replacements at Intermediate Allenwood and Central, a core switch that's part of our technology, server upgrades for the door access and cameras that's part of our security, and the salaries for individuals who work in operations total $2,691,000. Another district goal has to do with providing an environment that's culturally responsible and offers all students the flexibility to pursue meaningful opportunities based on their interest level. And again, we have some overlap here. This includes the vocational offerings that students can access through the career academies and shared time programs. I already mentioned all of the different offerings at the high school, the intermediate school, and the elementary schools. We also have a district goal linked to having the community involvement for all stakeholders, and we have community advisory boards for all of the high school academies. We have students involved in intern opportunities with area businesses. We have improvements to facilities that will be used by the community, security improvements which will accommodate community involvement, and that includes the continued staffing of school safety officers at school events and events sponsored by parent groups, and the core switch and server upgrade for the door access and camera system, which also provides added security. We've been looking at enrollment over time and how that affects the budget, and this is an updated slide which shows resident enrollment. And I've added a slide. The next one will give you student enrolls. So resident enrollment refers to exactly that, students who are residents in the district who may or may not attend our schools. So we have residents that would be going to out-of-district placements at special education schools. We also have resident students for whom we pay tuition at the career academies. So as of in the 2019 school year, 2018-2019, the resident enrollment, as reported on the October 15 report, was 3351. And that's a change of 367 students. It's a decrease of 367 students over that five-year period. When you look at students enrolls, this will include students that we take in as tuition students. So 2019, the number is 3384, so obviously that's a little bit higher. And the change in students enrolls from 2014 to 2019 is 300 fewer students over that same five-year period. There have been some questions raised about residency and how do we ensure that all students who are attending schools in the district or attending schools paid for by the district budget are actually domiciled in Wall Township. And so this is some information from Policy 5111 that tells you what we're required to do when we are admitting students free of charge, and that would involve persons over the age of five and under the age of 20, or such younger or older students otherwise entitled by law to a free public education. So younger students would be three- and four-year-old children who are deemed eligible for special education services, and students over the age of 20 who would be eligible are those students who up till the age of 21, based on their individual education plan or special education needs, would be eligible to continue in Wall Township schools. Again, the law applies to students who are domiciled in Wall Township, so that would also include students who are maybe have shared custody agreements between parents, and one parent resides in Wall and the other parent does not. A student who is involved in a shared custody situation would be eligible to attend a school in Wall. It also includes students of parents who deem Wall Township to be their District of Temporary Residence, even if they have a domicile elsewhere. It requires, the Administrative Code requires us to continue to allow students to attend free of charge if the student's parents move to another school district as the result of being homeless, and Wall is currently educating 39 homeless students. Some of those homeless students, we are able to charge their District of Residence. So if a student becomes homeless and is temporarily residing in Wall, but their District of Residence is elsewhere, we can charge tuition to that previous school district. However, if a student is from Wall, becomes homeless, and is living in a neighboring town, that neighboring town can also charge Wall. So there's a reciprocal agreement there, and the parent has the choice of continuing to have his or her student educated in Wall or having them educated in their new temporary District of Residence. The New Jersey statute requires the Board to continue the enrollment of a student who moves out of the district as a result of domestic violence, sexual abuse, or other family crises for the remainder of the school year. And even if we question the initial eligibility of a student, we are required to enroll that student immediately, and we have to then pursue a residency investigation and go through the process of having that family appeal our initial determination of ineligibility. During that appeal process, the student continues to be educated in Wall Township, but the parent is put on notice that if the commissioner agrees with our determination of ineligibility, the parent would be responsible for tuition. Over the course of the past two years, we have conducted residency investigations in order to look further into the eligibility of 28 students. In 1718, we had 10 investigations involving 16 students. 10 of those 16 students withdrew after the investigation revealed that they were not domiciled in Wall. Five of the 16 were domiciled, one student continued as a tuition in student, and the cost of those investigations was a little over $1,000. In 2018-19, we've had six investigations involving 12 students. Nine of those students were domiciled in Wall. Three were eligible to continue in Wall as under the homeless status, and the cost of those investigations was $828. We look closely at the enrollment by grade and school as we prepare the budget. This is a breakdown of the students that are projected for each of the elementary schools by grade level next year. We do kindergarten registrations in January and February, so the numbers that you see for kindergarten are the actual current enrollment for September 2019 as of 3:30 this afternoon. At 4 o'clock this afternoon, we added two additional students to Old Mill. Yes. So Old Mill is now at 51, not the 49 that you see on that slide. The sections that I have highlighted in red are sections that I'm concerned about with regard to the number of children in a class and the potential to have to add teachers at those grade levels. Right now, at Central, we already have 89 children enrolled for kindergarten next year in four sections. That's 22.25 students per class, and that's already higher than our preferred maximum. At West Belmar, we have 21 students, but we also have four students that are being, will be evaluated for potential English language learning services, in which case they might move to West Belmar, and we have 23 students currently in kindergarten who would be moving up to first grade. So I would like to hope that people have indeed gotten the message that we enroll for kindergarten in January and February and that they're not waiting till the summer, but this slide shows you the late enrollments last summer for kindergarten. So by late enrollments, we mean students who enrolled in July and August, parents who enrolled their children in July and August. So in Allenwood, we had 10. In Central, 13. Old Mill, 10. West Belmar, four. So if that trend continues, the possible number of kindergarten children in Allenwood is 58. With three sections, we're still under our preferred maximum. At Central, however, will be up to 102, and that will need to have a fifth section. In fact, I'm concerned that we should have a fifth section of kindergarten now. At Old Mill, we're looking at 59/61 students. Again, we would be right there in terms of having three sections, and at West Belmar, we would be up to 25 if we had four more enrollments, but if we add those four potential ELL students, we're now at 29. So enrollment is increasing at the elementary level, but it's still decreasing a bit at the secondary level, although the decline in enrollment at the secondary level is tapering off. So over the course of three years, we have 119 fewer students at the intermediate school, and over the course of those same three years, we have 20 fewer students at the high school. Our special education enrollment over time is on this slide. In 2019, we had 663 students. That's a little bit of an increase over last year. And those 663 students are part of the overall enrollment that I mentioned. They're not in addition to the overall enrollment. This slide shows you staffing over the same period of time, 2014 to 2019. In 2019, we had a total of 781.58 total staff. So we don't have halves of individuals, but we do have people who work half-time. We had 422.6 certificated staff, 25.5 administrators, and 333.48 support staff. And I want to point out that on this slide, support staff refers to secretaries, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance, and paraprofessionals, and our school safety officers. When we get into some comparative data in a future slide, support staff, according to the DOE in their Taxpayer's Guide to School Budgets, support staff is defined differently, and I'll explain that when we get to it. This slide just gives you a history of the administrative changes and additions since 2014. In 2014, we added an HR manager. So according to the DOE, that's an administrative position. That individual replaced an HR coordinator, which was a clerical position or a support staff. So we didn't add a manager on top of the coordinator. We replaced the coordinator with a manager. We added an elementary STEM supervisor. In 2015, we added an elementary supervisor for special ed, but we replaced a K-12 English Language Arts supervisor with an intermediate supervisor, and we converted the P-12 special ed supervisor to 612 special ed. 2016-17, there were no additions or changes. Similarly, in 17 and 18, 18-19, we added a part-time supervisor of music, K-12, and in 2019-20, we have not budgeted for any additions. So just to give you an overview of the current administrative structure, at the district level, we have a superintendent, business administrator, three directors, and a human resources manager. At the high school, we have a principal and two assistant principals, two supervisors, an athletic director, and a director of guidance. At the intermediate school, a principal, two assistant principals, one supervisor of instruction, and a 612 supervisor of special ed. of instruction, and a 612 supervisor of special ed that's shared between the high school and the intermediate school. At the elementary schools, we have four principals and three supervisors. And the K-12 supervisor of music is shared between the high school, intermediate school, and the elementary schools. I should also point out that in 2016-17, we reduced the supervisors from 12-month positions to 10-month positions with 20 days in the summer. So this shows you 2014 and then 2018, 2019. You can see the difference then since 2014. We have 367 fewer students, but 36 additional special education students. We are sending 12 fewer students out of district for special education services, which means we are educating more of our students in district. Certificated staff has gone up by 25 individuals, and a lot of that is due to the intense special ed programs that we have brought into the district, our BD classes, behavioral disabled, and they require more staff. Also, in 2014, we added full-day kindergarten, which means the number of kindergarten teachers basically doubled. The administration has increased by 3.5, and that has provided additional support and restructuring for consistency across schools. And the support staff has increased by 20. That is an increase in security and also paraprofessionals. Getting into the revenue side of the budget. For 2019-20, we are anticipating, well, there's three different slides for the revenue side of the budget. The tentative budget that was approved in March had the tax levy increase at 2%. After the tentative budget was approved, we've had FNF discussions and also conversations at the board meeting. And there was another budget workshop where there was interest from some board members in reducing the tax levy further. One of the ways it was suggested that we could reduce the tax levy was by using the additional state aid that we received of $156,800 to provide some taxpayer relief. Another suggestion in the budget that Mr. Smythe developed was to draw more down from capital reserve in terms of withdrawal from capital reserve in order to fund projects in the budget, and that additional drawdown is $500,000. So you'll see on these next three slides that there is one suggestion where the anticipated revenue would include a 2% tax levy increase. There's another alternative where it includes a 1.22% tax levy increase. And then there's a third alternative where the tax levy increase is 0.98%. So after the presentation and board discussion tonight, the board will take action to approve one of three possible resolutions, one being 2%, the other 1.22, and the third alternative, 0.98. In the slide that you're looking at, the tax levy would increase by $1,306,611. And the total general fund would be $76,958,800. In this alternative, which is the 1.22% increase, the tax levy change, or the dollar amount for the tax levy, is an increase of $799,611. The total general fund is $76,951,800. And in the third alternative, which is the 0.98% increase in the tax levy, the increase is $642,800. The capital reserve drawdown is $507,000. I just went back to 1.22 for a minute. So you can see the difference in the capital reserve drawdown in this version is just $7,000. And at the 2%, it's also $7,000. So getting back to 0.98, the change in the tax levy is $642,811. And the total general fund, grand total, is $76,795,000. The other options that we have for revenue would include using what's called banked cap of $686,381. That money comes from taxes that we didn't use in previous years, or taxes that we did not assess on the public in previous years, and/or health benefit waivers that we might have been eligible for. So there's none from 1617. There's $490,000 and $316 from 1718. And there's $196,065 from 1819. None of the budgets that are being discussed tonight, none of the alternatives, includes using any of that banked cap or additional revenue. So that's where the money is potentially coming from, to fund the programs for the next school year. This is the appropriation side of the budget. And here, you're looking at three years of history: regular education, special education, basic skills, bilingual, co-curricular, tuition. And tuition here means out-of-district tuition, tuition that we pay to other schools such as special education schools or to the career academies. Support services, administration, technology, operations, transportation, benefits, equipment, capital projects. And the totals are the same. So in the 2%, the amount of money that we would be spending equals what we would be taking in in terms of revenue, $76,958,800. This slide shows you graphically what that looks like. And this slide is actually, as a percentage, is the same for all three versions of the budget. So whether we're at a 2% tax levy, 1.22%, or 0.98%, the percentage that we are expending from the budget by program type is the same. So regular instruction is 27% of the budget. Special education is 11% of the budget. Basic skills or bilingual is 1%, right? Benefits is 18% of the budget. Okay? And I have a slide that explains what benefits are. This is the 1.22% tax levy increase and how things change a little bit in terms of appropriations. The total expenditures would be $76,951,800. And at .098, or at 0.98, excuse me, we're looking at $76,795. I think this slide is helpful to also look at the budget comparison by function. Each category is listed here, and then on Slide 18, there's a little bit more, which used to be Slide 18. I'm sorry, I added slides. I'm going to have to fix that. Employee salaries are 60% of the budget. Employee benefits are 18%. Purchased professional and technical services are 2%. Property services are 2%. Other purchase services, 8%. Supplies and materials, 5%. And facilities are 5%. And that's a graphic representation. So 78% of the budget is salaries and benefits for employees. And those percentages are the same in all three versions of the budget that we're looking at tonight. This is the breakdown at .98, and that was the breakdown at 1.22. So some slight differences that get to that overall change. But remember, the main way that we get from 2% to .98 is the drawdown on capital reserve of $500,000 and the non-use of the $156,800 that was additional state aid. Keeping the additional state aid is the 1.22%. Not keeping the additional state aid and the drawdown on capital reserve is the .98. So this is now Slide 37, not 18. I added too many slides today. But this is what the categories mean. Benefits has a whole slide of its own, so we'll get to that one next. Purchased professional and technical services refers to anything that we have to spend regarding legal fees, auditing, and educational services. Purchased property services is rental of land, cleaning, repairs to buildings, the lease or purchase of buses, water, and sewer. Other purchase services includes insurance, communications, transportation contracts, and out-of-district tuition. Supplies and materials is classroom supplies, textbooks, but also utilities and fuel. Property is equipment, so anything over $2,000 is considered equipment. Other objects include memberships and association dues, any judgments, and some miscellaneous. Facilities are capital improvements related to facilities, like boilers, the bus compound. HVAC is facilities. Benefits totals $13 million of the budget. The group disability insurance is $17,000. That's not a change from last year. Social Security is $1 million. That's $90,000 less than the current year. The district contribution towards pensions is $1,361,752, and that's $100,752 more than in 1819. Workers' compensation is in the budget for $635,000, and that's $35,000 more than 1819. The district cost of health benefits is $10,581,554, and that's just under $1 million more than in 1819. Tuition reimbursement is in the budget for $27,000. That's actually $24,000 less than in 1819. And we determine that number by the teachers who give us advanced notice, as they're required to in their collective bargaining agreement, of their intention to continue graduate study. Uniforms are $26,580, I'm sorry, $845. We have several different categories of employees that wear uniforms. Surrender of health benefits is $347,315, which is $9,815 more than in 1819. This is money that's paid to employees who choose not to take health benefits. They do a health benefits waiver, and it's a contractual obligation. Sick time reimbursement upon retirement is $34,253, and that's $5,000 less than 1819. And again, that money is budgeted based on the employees that have given us notice of retirement and what they're entitled to, either by New Jersey Administrative Code or by their collective bargaining agreement. These are some highlights of the budget, just putting things into categories. For security and mental health, we are adding an additional nurse. I discussed this at one of the budget workshops. This will give us the opportunity to have a nurse who's available to cover for nurses who are out sick, cover during their lunch breaks, also cover, if possible, for some after-school activities. And it gives us a little bit more flexibility with covering field trips. The server upgrade for the door access and camera and smoke detector head replacement are obviously for security. Those are new things in the budget. The continuation of our school safety officers, our school and family liaison counselors, our child study team members, our SAC, our other mental health professionals that are in the budget already, that's not mentioned as a highlight because it's not new to the 1920 budget, but those things are still continuing. With regard to the infrastructure, we already talked about HVAC improvements, the replacement of the core switch, buses, vans, the roof, masonry repairs, painting, and door replacements. Technology, the one-to-one initiative, formative assessment software. With regard to curriculum and instructional instruction, I haven't mentioned yet this evening. We will be purchasing new algebra and geometry textbooks. We'll be expanding the Reader's Workshop model, K-12. New science resources, K-5. We just finished a science program evaluation. New health resources, K-5. Again, that's coming on recommendations from a program evaluation. Digital formative assessments, and also adding digital information text resources in science and social studies for all grade levels. This slide just gives you some history of where we are with capital reserve. So over the course of several years, the district put money into capital reserve so that we would have it available to use. The available balance as of June 30, 2018, was $3,782,795. The capital reserve account balance, this would be at the 2% tax levy increase. The capital reserve balance during the 1920 school year would be down to $1,682,301 because we would be drawing down $2,957,000. Under the 1.22 or the .98% increase in the tax levy, we would be drawing down $3,457,000 from capital reserve, which would leave $1,182,301 for the 1920 school year. These next few slides just give you an idea of how our spending compares to other districts and to the state. So these are the same indicators that we looked at last year. We have the budgeted cost per pupil. This information comes from the Department of Education, 2018 Taxpayer's Guide to Educational Spending. And in 2018, they're reporting out on 2017-18 school year, right? So the 18- So the 18-19 school year would not yet be available. The budgeted cost per pupil were $17,575. Administrative costs, $1,0851. Total classroom instruction was $10,391 per pupil. Supplies and textbooks, $294. Support services cost per pupil, $2,615. Now, this is where support services gets defined differently. In the Comparative Guide to Spending, support services includes counselors, child study team members, you know, certificated staff who support our students. Occupational therapists, physical therapists, all of those related service providers, speech, they make up support services. Operations and maintenance per pupil is $2,118. Extracurricular costs, $414. Our ratio of students to classroom teachers was 9.5, and the median teacher salary was reported at $63,200. The ratio of students to educational support personnel is 53.4, and the median salary is 71,250. And this is where it's important to understand what support personnel refers to. The salary is higher because typically, all of those individuals who make up support personnel have their master's degree, so they would be higher on the salary guide than some teachers, okay? The ratio of students to administrative personnel was 156.2, and the median salary 146,511. The ratio of faculty to administrative personnel was 19.3. This chart shows you comparative spending, or this table shows you comparative spending for our district compared to several other school districts. Now, the reason why these districts were chosen last year for comparative spending is Chatham and Ridgewood in particular have been touted as districts who are very efficient and do better than Wall Township in terms of their student achievement. Homedale, Ocean, Neptune, and Haslett are districts in Monmouth County who have the same configuration as we do, K to 12. So they don't have K-8 districts that are then sending to their high school. They're not a regional high school district. They're, you know, basically the same configuration as us. And their average daily enrollment, which is reported here, is similar to ours. Homedale has 3,008 students compared to our 3541, which was the average daily enrollment plus students that we send out. So it's similar to that resident number. Chatham is a little bit higher, 4,249. Ocean has 3,606. Neptune, 4,299. Haslett, 2913. And Ridgewood, again, is being used for other comparison purposes. They have 5,734. So the numbers in green represent the highest efficiency or the best efficiency. Chatham's total spending per pupil is the lowest at $18,078. Their budgetary cost per pupil is also the lowest at $14,016. And they spend less on classroom instruction, which I don't necessarily know is a good thing, but it is a lower amount. The median administrator salary is the lowest in Homedale. The lowest classroom supplies and textbook amount being spent is in Neptune at 183. The lowest amount being spent on support services is in Haslett. And again, you know, this is where it depends on your perspective, whether that's good or bad. And I don't necessarily think that spending less on support services for your students is a good thing. And Ridgewood, they have the lowest numbers in terms of operation and maintenance and extracurricular cost. So there are a lot of variables that come into play when you're looking at why some school districts are able to be more efficient in terms of their budget compared to others. Some of these school districts outsource their custodians and maintenance, as well as their transportation and food services. So the cost is lower, but you also then have employees that are not employed, or you have individuals working in your school district who are not employed by the Board of Education. And so therefore, they're also not earning a pension through the Department of Education, and you don't have the same control in terms of hiring them as you do if they were district employees. Some of these school districts are much smaller geographically, so their transportation costs would be affected by that. And so I've mentioned geographically, that affects the transportation, and the outsourcing of transportation, custodians, maintenance, and food services affects the overall budget. The median administrator salary is influenced by how many administrators you have in the district. The number on total spending is a little bit odd, and so I want to point out to you what that means. Wall's total spending in 1718 was $80,506, as reported by the DOE. However, we didn't have a budget that was $80 million. So where does that total spending number come from? Well, the total spending measure adds the following items to the costs that are already included in the budgetary cost. So when you go on the DOE website and you look at that comparative spending information, indicator one is your budgetary cost. To that, in order to get the total spending, they add pensions and social security payments that are made by the state on behalf of the district. Transportation costs, including students transported to non-public and charter schools. So any student who lives in Wall that is transported to one of the private schools like St. Rose or CBA, you know, they're entitled to transportation to that non-public school, and our, you know, your tax dollars pay for that. Judgments against the school district. Food service expenditures, including those that might be covered by the school lunch fees. The capital outlay budgeted in the general fund for facilities and equipment. Special revenues supported by the state, local, and federal revenues such as preschool aid, IDEA, which is the grant for individuals with disabilities in education, and Title I, which is part of the ESSA grant, which stands for Every Student Succeeds Act, right? It used to stand for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, but now it stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. And prior to that, it was called NCLB, right? So just that grant, Title I of that grant, is to support at-risk students, and it's based on the number of economically disadvantaged students that you have in your district. Payments by the district to other private and public school districts for the provision of regular special ed and preschool services. Debt service for school debt, and an estimate of the district share of debt service that the state is paying for school construction bonds issued for school construction grants and school development authority projects. And we did have, over the course of the past several years, several ROD grants, that was part of that school development authority projects, where we received some state funding for projects that we did in the district. The last one, if you'll recall, was the PA system and the new phone systems that we put into all of the schools a few years ago. So looking at, you know, those comparative districts, I also took a look at some of the comparative ratios. Now, some things on the DOE website in that comparative spending guide are a year behind, some are two years behind. So the data on these ratios was available for 2016-17. I kept on this table the average daily enrollment, so you could see how that compares. I looked at the student-teacher ratio, and we are what would be considered the least efficient in terms of our teacher-student ratio. It's 9.3 compared to Ridgewood, which is 13.3. I looked at the student support staff, student-to-support staff ratio. And again, here, support staff is counselors, child study team members, nurses. It's not paraprofessional secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, and SSOs. And there, our ratio, again, is considered the least efficient at 55.4 students to one. But then, I would argue that efficiency is in the eye of the beholder, right? Having 181.9 students per support staff member might not be best for students. So it's good for the budget, but is it best for students? The faculty-to-administrative ratio, we are actually the most efficient of these districts, with 20 staff members to one administrator. And the percent of classified students is also continued on this slide, because again, the number of classified students that you have in the district also dictates, to some degree, the amount of support that you need to budget for. This is a comparison of what the impact on the average homeowner would be at each of the tax levy increases that are discussed in the three alternatives to the budget that are being discussed tonight. So at 2%, the annual increase on the average home is $83.21. At 1.22%, the annual increase on the average home is $63.19. And at .98%, the annual increase on the average home is $56.63. This slide just shows you a side-by-side comparison of the tax impact. Again, looking at that average home, the difference is 5663 compared to 6319 compared to 8321. The annual difference between 8321 and 5663 is $26.58 a year, or $2.22 a month. Looking at the overall comparison of the operating budget compared to the annual increase on the average home, at .98%, we're looking at $76,795,000. At 1.22%, $76,951,000. So that's a difference of $156,800. Remember, $156,800 was the additional state aid that we received this year, over and above what we had received last year. And at 2%, the operating budget is $76,958,800. That's a difference of $163,800. Just to give you some perspective, $156,800 is 0.4% of the base salaries of all members of the WTEA. And we're currently negotiating a new collective bargaining agreement with the WTEA. $163,800 is 0.45%. So this amount could be significant in terms of settling the contract, or this amount might be needed for additional teachers, especially in kindergarten and first grade, as I showed in those enrollment slides. The 2% increase in the tax levy increase would also leave an additional $500,000 in capital reserve as compared to the .98% option. And the average increase, the annual increase on the average home, you know, $26.58 a year is about 5 cents a week. The other information that just became available today and that I wanted to share with you is US News and World Report just released today their top high schools for 2018. So looking at those same high schools that were in our comparative spending, I have Chatham, which we know does very well. They were, they ranked 300, the top 350 high schools in New Jersey, and the top 12,800 and something in the country. So Chatham was number 14 in the state, and they were 351 in the country. Wall High School was 130 in the state out of 350, and we were in, we were 3,214 in the country out of the 12,000 high schools, almost 13,000 high schools that they reported on in the country. Here's the other districts. Homedale, Raritan High School, which is in Haslett, Ocean, and Neptune. And then, just to give you a perspective, this table shows you the high schools in Monmouth County that were part of that report in US News and World Report that came out today. They go in order by column. So Homedale was 106, Manasquan was 107. You can see that the top five were all public high schools that have entrance criteria. So they were all part of the academies in Monmouth County. The eight, there were eight non-academy high schools in Monmouth County that were ranked higher than Wall Township, and there were 15 that were ranked lower than Wall Township. And obviously, there were some high schools in Monmouth County that did not make the list of the top 350 in New Jersey. So we've provided, you know, in other presentations, lots of other information on student achievement. This, tonight, is a budget presentation, but because this information just came out today, I thought I would give you that little bit of perspective in terms of how the district is doing overall, with the high school being the culmination of a K-12 education in Wall Township. Certainly, the students' achievement at the high school doesn't begin in ninth grade. It begins in preschool and kindergarten, and the foundations that are built in elementary school and intermediate school lead to the success that we see with our students at the high school, and, you know, this information. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Before we open for public comment, does anybody on the board have any questions with regards to Mrs. Dyer's presentation?
Can I just clarify? I'm sorry, Mr. Smythe has pointed out that my ability to do division is evidently suspect this evening, and 26.58 is not 5 cents a week, but it's 50 cents a week. So, sorry, after a while, all those numbers just float around in your brain.
I'll try that again. Does anybody have any questions on the board for Mrs. Dyer? Okay. Seeing none at this time, we will open the floor for public comment pursuant to policy 0167. Please limit your comments to five minutes apiece.
It doesn't look like there's a lot of people here tonight, so I'm wondering if I can go over the five minutes, because you just put the presentation up at 12:21, I think, today. So, I'm hoping, Ms. Connolly, can you open it up once I go up once, and then everybody else goes, if I can go up again?
It's five minutes, Mrs. Cross.
Why is it five minutes?
Mrs. Cross, why don't you begin with your comments?
So, what, can I not come back up? Is the board president not allowing it? I just wanted that on the record. Make sure you put it in the minutes, okay? Just want to go over, you didn't answer my questions from the last budget workshop meeting, so if you could go over those. I did not get answers for that. I find it very disturbing that we didn't get this presentation up until 12 o'clock. How I look at it is, a lot of your numbers that you put in these charts don't really match up with your audit reports. It would just be easier if you just followed, you know, costs for salaries, benefits, along with that. I'm finding that in your 2% increase in the budget, it's the $1,003,000. But for all the items that you would like to add, it's $3,058,000. So, you are short. Let me get that number. $1,451,000. So, if you could go over actually what you're cutting from the budget based off of what you budgeted last year, because you can't tell what you're doing from this. So, the presentation doesn't really make a lot of sense. If you had put this up earlier, I could have put it in writing. When you go to .98, then you got to cut, when you go to 1.22, you got to cut 2.2. So, when you're using 997 just for salary increases and just, and 990 for health benefits, you're way over the 2% cap, so you have to cut things. So, you know, to me, the board has not done a good job with this. I wouldn't agree to any increase whatsoever. I would go to Mr. Smythe and say, "Mr. Smythe, you have to find ways to raise money." And I've been bringing it up with the transportation study, that you're, we know you're overspending. They've said it by $234,000, hire a transportation consultant. I don't see that in here. If you had done it five years ago, you would have saved $1 million. I don't understand how staffing is going up so much. You're down 300 students, and you're up in staff. I know you went over the numbers, but it still doesn't make a lot of sense. The figures came out yesterday from Ms. Gleason. Our scores are terrible in the high school. We're under for reading, and we're under for math. So, that's why we're 130 on the chart. We need to definitely be more efficient. What's going on with Latin? That was asked last time. What are you doing with the staffing for that? How much is in the budget for Cheryl and Brian specifically? I'd like those numbers. These 12, you know, taking 12-month people, putting them to 10-month people. Your 10, your 12-month employees are working less than your teachers. You see, in Ridgewood, you see how, how their scores are better, because look how much their teachers are paid. When your teachers are unhappy, you're, you're not going to be happy. Can Mr. Smythe go over the problems with the HVAC bids? I've sent it in a number of times now. Are you still, is it still under, is the low bid are still coming back to? You didn't go over that. The missing emails from Eric Brophy. I don't see Eric Brophy. I don't see Tennant McGee. What's going on with all those missing emails? Brian Smythe says W2s to his contracts? And can you go over if you're looking at a referendum in the next year? And if you are, how much is it going to be? So, I'd like you to answer all those questions. Could you go over surplus? Could you go over the fund balance, Mr. Smythe? In your audit report, it was $10,110,070. You know, it's way too much. You said you started this process in the fall. It's now almost May, and we got this up at 12 o'clock. I do not want to see Cheryl's contract renewed. Ms. Connolly, I think you should resign, and you know the reasons why. Ms. Malloy, I think you should resign as well. If I had time tonight, I'd read your instant messages. You should not be on the board with all you've been doing. We can't have people working on budgets when they don't understand facts and figures. I see a 0% increase in this budget. You have not done your due diligence. You have not asked Mr. Smythe to do anything. I did go to Trenton today, and the case that I had against Mr. Smythe was in my favor. Mr. Smythe has not provided information regarding the food service audit report. He was hiding a letter that showed he misappropriated $192,000. We then had to spend $100,000 on a forensic auditor, and Mr. Gross and Mr. Smythe sat for two and a half hours trying to figure out how not to get that letter out. So, I think the board is going to have to figure out what they were talking about, because that was misappropriation of funds, and we need to get to the bottom of this. We can't keep having Mr. Smythe withholding public information and then having to go to court, because now it's going to happen over and over again. So, if you could go over, Mr. Gross, what did you tell Mr. Smythe that night? Did you tell him to try and hide the information?
Excuse me, Mrs.
Or did you advise him to give the information?
Excuse me, Mrs. Cross. You're now at 5 minutes and 30 seconds.
And Mr. Smythe decided on his own not to give it, because it was going to show he was misallocating money. If you could go over tonight, that tonight, I think it's very, very important.
Thank you.
And go over tonight why Mr. Smythe's W2s don't match.
You're now at 5 minutes and 45 seconds.
Right. And go over, well, you didn't answer my questions from the last meeting, so why don't you go over?
You're now at 5 minutes and 50 seconds.
And Mr. Gross also should not be rehired. That is obvious.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
Please answer my questions tonight.
Kathleen Duran, Duback Road in Wall. I share Betsy's concern that the information was not provided early enough today to be reviewed, nor is a lot of the information provided on Ms. Dyer's slides in the handout for me to look at now. Just like I did the previous three years, I will be going to the Department of Education to check the comparator cities and towns that you listed, Chatham and so forth, because what I have found in the previous three years is that the comparators were not necessarily validly chosen. They were either not the same size, or you left out, as I saw on the slides, you left out, again, the relative administrative cost. There's nothing here for me to go over. There's nothing here for, for me to check, and I find that very disingenuous, because you know that's what's going to have to happen. I've pointed it out for the past three years. This will be my fourth year. I will do the work again. I will make the facts and figures available to everyone else, but I really think it's disingenuous. You know I've stood up here and wasted my time trying to get you to understand that the complaint that's being voiced is that the cost of administrating our district, including the cost of Ms. Dyer's salary, Mr. Smythe's salary, as well as other administrative costs, isn't justified by the testing results or by our rankings. So, you have a misallocation of resources away from the children and away from the teachers, and it's showing up elsewhere in the budget. And I will take it apart, and we'll be ready at the next meeting. You'll have to wait to the end, and I will go through it again. But I, I'm really concerned that it's not there. I'm super concerned about the court case that happened today, Mr. Smythe. It is a black eye for Wall in Trenton. It's not the first time. I don't understand why the board thinks it's okay that we get this black eye, and you can hide behind Mr. Gross or whatever else you're going to do, but it's not right. You are not releasing documents that should be released to the public. It's wrong. It's the wrong behavior. You're, you're, you're charged with being a records custodian. The letter was releasable, and now the government, the state, has spoken and said, "You're wrong." How many times we have to keep barking up this tree? And if, you know, we're still giving this man a raise every year? What don't you get? What doesn't anybody get? How many times you have to be slapped down? What you guys are doing is not right. So, I don't want to hear it. It's just ridiculous. And the $1 million over, increase on health benefits? Is that a failure to negotiate a good deal? What is it? A million dollars? Nobody has that, a million. What's it due to? I'd really like to know the exact particulars. If you're going from a, you know, if you're going to go take a different third-party provider to administer the plan, if you're going to go from self-insured to a fully insured, whatever it is, but I'd really start looking at those numbers. The other numbers, I haven't had time to take apart, but the million jumped out at me right away, and I haven't heard one word about how that kind of increase is justified. And I don't like when I hear disingenuous speak like, "It's a nickel a week. Can't we just come, you know, come up with this money?" You're making it look like this decision for this group is, is easy, and it's a foregone conclusion, but it's not. It's incrementalism. It's not a nickel a week. It's 50 cents a week, and it is, it's incremental, because year after year, those costs keep creeping up till we are out of balance with the other school districts in this state. And it looks really bad, and it works bad. It works an injustice to the kids, because our performance and our teachers' payments are not in keeping with the incrementalism of the administrative costs that you keep imposing on us. That's my concern. I'm going to take it apart, somehow I'll get a copy. I hope that Ms. Dyer's slides will all be posted, because they're certainly not here, so that I can take it apart, and I'll take you all through it painfully, like I do every year, to show you that it's not as simple as, as 50 cents a week. It's more complicated than that, and we're paying, my property tax, which used to be $6,000, is now $12,000 in just a couple of years. And it's, the big spenders are you guys. This is where it's happening. This is what's driving us out of town. This is what I want you to get through your heads, that this incrementalism of a few percent, and somebody writing online, that Ms., Ms., you know, Ms. Connolly looked so concerned about whether it was point, you know, the 9.8% or the 1.2 or the 2.0. It's the creep, and it's the incrementalism, and it's not just a, oh, it's a nickel a week more, or even 50 cents a week more. It's the cost overall. And I, I'm appalled that the, that it's going up. I'm appalled there's no reason that I can see in what I have read so far for the healthcare, and nothing about the comparators till I take it apart and get a good look at it, and then I'll certainly share my opinion the next time. Thank you.
Robyn Cervantes, I live in Wall. On your Slide 41, Capital Reserve History, I'm confused about the $856,506 anticipated deposit from capital facilities in June of 2019. I just wasn't really sure where that's, I thought this is the capital reserve account that we're talking about. Is this by a board resolution that is unexpendited revenue going into that account at the end of June? Because that's almost $1 million, and I wasn't sure if that was what it was. I know, I believe, in the previous year, the unexpendited revenue went to the emergency reserve in the amount of around $700,000. So, I just noticed that, and I, it just, the wording on here wasn't clear, and I just didn't know where it was coming from and why a deposit would be being deposited in June unless it was, again, unexpendited revenue. In other words, whatever was in the budget that wasn't spent. The other thing is, I know in previous years during budget presentations, when it was discussed about previous years when other boards hadn't gone to cap, there was a discussion about the compounding and what the district loses when you don't go to cap, because one year, when I was on the board, we didn't, and the following year, it was discussed how much money the district lost in, in terms of compounding. So, I didn't know if that figure was calculated on these slides as well.
Is there anybody else for public comment?
I don't think the auditorium here is ADA compliant. At a minimum, I think you should have railings going up to centers. You know, this, this same thing as last, last month at the last meeting, this five-minutes rule, or whatever it is, kind of aggravates me. There's not a lot of people here tonight. I just wish one of you board members would have the intestinal fortitude to make a motion to extend the public participation to 10 minutes. Mr. Filippo, why don't you do it? Mr. MacArthur, why don't you do it? Let's find out who doesn't want to hear from the public. Somebody make a motion, somebody second it and have a vote. Then we'll see who really wants to hear from the public and who doesn't want to hear from the public. Somebody make a motion. Little intestinal fortitude up there. I'm sure all of you aren't puppets up there. You come and ask me for my vote. Then you sit there like a puppet.
I don't think it's fair to say puppet. And I, I want to put on the record that numerous times I have fought for longer public comment. I have said it in policy meetings.
Then make a motion. Then make a motion.
Can we just wait until you're, I don't want to interrupt your five minutes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Make a motion. Let's see who wants to hear from the public and who doesn't want to hear from the public. By the way, I thought the presentation was pretty good. It's a shame we didn't get it earlier, so we could have looked at it. Thank you.
Make the motion, Rob. Is anybody else for public comment?
I'd like to go off again.
No, Mrs. Cross.
I would like to make a motion, we extend the time.
I'll second.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make a.
So, we're clear, the motion to extend the time would be a motion to change your policy.
Yes, yeah.
I'm only commenting on what I heard. So, if the motion is to extend the time, that would be to change your policy.
What Mr. Gross is saying is that your motion needs to be more specific, Mr. Sullivan.
I would like to make a motion, we extend the time to 10 minutes for this meeting for tonight.
I'll second the motion. And, and just to clarify, Mr. Marchand, I was not trying to ignore you. I was just waiting till you were done speaking, because that's part of the procedure. We wait till everybody speaks and then, and then respond.
I want to make sure I understand what the motion is. The motion is to extend any individual's time from five minutes, for an additional five minutes to make it 10 total for this evening only.
So, for purposes of the budgetary.
The budget here this evening.
This evening, we'd like to extend the mo, uh, public speaking time 10 minutes.
I'm just making sure that's Mr. Sullivan's motion.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Questions and comments from the board, of course.
Are there any questions or comments from the board for the motion? There are none.
Is there any?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy? Mr. Sam Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Waniak?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes. Motion carries.
Five more minutes, or anybody else?
Okay, so.
Ms. Cross, I want to remind you, you spoke for six minutes.
Ms. Cross, I want to remind you, you spoke for six minutes the first time.
I'd like to remind you, you didn't answer my questions last month, and I'd like you to answer my questions now, so that I can use my five minutes towards what you answer.
Ms. Cross, I'm gonna start your clock, and I was kidding about the extra minute.
I'd like you to answer my questions that I just asked. I mean, if you had put this presentation up, I would've sent in questions. This is a very, very poor presentation. Can you answer, Ms. Connolly, ask everybody to answer the questions?
Mrs. Cross, I think you've come to enough board meetings that you know that we do public comment and then we answer the questions, so we're not gonna.
What is the purpose of that? This is a budget hearing for $77 million. Allison, this is why you should not be on the board and you should resign, because your letters to the editor aren't anything like you are when you're here. You're a terrible board member, absolutely horrible, and you should resign. And I'm glad to see you paid your property taxes now. You have some nerve up here. Don't be going around putting letters to the editor, bragging about what you're gonna do, and then you get up here and you do absolutely nothing. You don't understand anything. You don't understand the concepts, the numbers. You've never even looked at the budget report. You can't even answer a question. Could you go over, what is Cheryl Dyer's figures in the contract? What salary have you put in for her? What have you put in for Brian Smythe? I saw 3% in the raise. Why in the world would you give Brian Smythe a 3% raise? He should probably get an $80,000 cut in pay. He took $20,000 in 2005 that he shouldn't have gotten. Today, he lost the case, because he was trying to hide a letter showing he was misappropriating food service funds. We've now had to spend $100,000 just on that, right? On the forensic audit? You're shaking your head, Mr. Cross? You should know. We spent $100,000 on a forensic audit, which said exactly pretty much what we thought. Mr. Smythe misallocated $192,000, and he misallocated $772,000 of public funds for food service. So that's a fact. Mr. Smythe should not be here. He shouldn't have been here after Habel. He should have been gone, and he's still here, and we are all still suffering for it. He needs to be gone. Allison, you need to be gone. Cheryl Dyer needs to be gone, and Dory Malloy needs to be gone. We might get somewhere if the four of you are not here. You couldn't even pick a board member. You had three people, all of them were qualified. And what did you do? You got up and you left the room. As board president, Ms. Connolly, you should've said, "We're not leaving here until we have a board member," because then we could actually vote on a budget and have nine people, and we could actually vote on Cheryl's contract and have nine people. But no, the dysfunction under Allison Connolly prevents it. Going over the bus compound, which we know there was absolutely no diligence on, even though Dory Malloy writes all over Facebook that there was. She can't present anything. It's not even in the timeline. I actually have something redacted from September 19, 2017. Mr. Smythe advised the board that Jeff Bertrand Township Administrator had asked if there was any interest in blank, 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 blank. Mr. Smythe advised the board of the pros and cons of blank. They're proposed, and the cons were blank, and the location, and the logistics of routing buses through residential areas. The pros is the potential cost savings to the district. Can you tell me why you hid that, Mr. Smythe? You've already signed a 10-year horrible deal with Howell. Why are you hiding this now? Why is this not in your timeline, Ms. Malloy? Why isn't it? Anybody know what this was? Where was this location, Mr. Adenizio? Where was it? Why is Brian hiding it? I think he hit another one. September 21, Mr. Gross advised the board of the development offer, Mr. Gross advised, Mr. Smythe reported on the blank property, blank, blank, blank. Why are you hiding it, Mr. Smythe? You already signed that crazy 10-year deal. Why are you still hiding it? I just opened this. You want to get sued again? You want to pay Mr. Gross for two and a half hours, $350 to figure out how you're gonna hide it? That's right. The fifth person is Michael Gross. Get rid of him. The costs that he has put us through, when I'm looking at contracts back to 2000, Michael Gross is here. All the problems are while Michael Gross is here. Who's Michael Breen? Anybody know up there? Mr. Gross, you know who that is? What else? We had a meeting, June 15, 2000. It was set up at 7:30 in the morning to give lots of big raises to people. Brian Smythe was one of them. Jack Han was one of them. Who sets up meetings at 7:30 in the morning?
Thank you, Mrs. Cross. Your additional five minutes is now up concerning the budget presentation.
Thank you, Michael Breen.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
Madam President, I have a question.
Mr. Adenizio.
We've talked about locations, I mean, numerous times in public, so why would, and I don't know the answer to this, but why would locations be redacted?
If you want, we could discuss that in executive session. I'm not gonna provide.
Discuss it now. What's the matter, Mr. Gross? We're not paying you?
That's, alright, that's fine.
Is it an executive session to talk about it, and then you can redact what you talked about?
Ms. Connolly, I have a few questions as well, just to confirm. At the last meeting, didn't we go over in detail, on the record, videotape the difference between W-2 and 1099s? Was that the last meeting? What was the date of that again? Yeah. It was last week, right? 4/16, okay. Okay. Wow. I believe I was paying attention, and it was directly about Brian Smythe, and it is definitely on the video. We'll have to look at that. Another question that I have is.
Mrs. Cross, please. You had your turn.
In 2000, in 2000, so what, we're in 2019? So in the year 2000, are we supposed to be aware of some kind of meeting at 7:30 in the morning from 19 years ago? That affects us? Okay. And again, can we maybe post a link again to the forensic audit results with all the details, so that everyone can actually read it?
This link is on the website.
Maybe we just need to make sure it's moved up, so that everyone knows where it is, and they can actually read it.
Mrs. Cross, please, you had your turn. You had 10 minutes.
And then I did also have a question on the Capital Reserve. Can you just go over the $856,000? I believe we've spoke about that in the past, but just, what does happen when that goes into the Capital Reserve versus if it went into a different account? And then, I know we've also talked about the cap, like what happens to Wall down the road, a year, three years from now?
Mr. Smythe?
With regard to some of the comments or questions that were actually related to the budget, the one being the increase in the, or the increase in revenues and the appropriations not matching, and that we're assured $1 million or $2 million, I assure you, it is a balanced budget. The tax levy, as approved with the tentative budget, was an increase of 2%. The tax levy increase, or the increase to the tax levy, is not, is not the only revenue that's being utilized in this budget, as discussed in all the workshops, as provided in the presentation with regard to the increases in other revenue sources. We've increased other revenues to make up any shortfall in the increase in appropriations, the largest one being the funding of the capital projects, mostly out of a drawdown from the Capital Reserve account. So there is not a shortfall of $1 million or $2 million in the budget. It's just not being funded by the tax levy. It's being funded by other revenue sources. With regard to the increase in the health benefit costs, we still compare very favorably to any other option presented to the school district with regard to health benefits. If you recall the presentation by, or the information provided by the broker last year, we are a million or $2 million below what we would be paying if we were in the state health benefits plan, and it is even a greater savings if we were to compare us going into a private plan. So self-insured is still the best answer for the district, and we've saved considerable dollars over the year. The recommendation of the increase is based on, or comes from our broker. I will remind you that we funded the health benefit increase or another revenue source as a drawdown from our emergency reserve account of $695,000. So the increase is $990,000, so on a, from a revenue side, or from how we're funding that $990,000 increase from the general fund, or from the other revenue sources such as the tax levy, state aid, it's an increase of less than $300,000, because we're funding $695,000 of the $990,000 increase with a withdrawal from the emergency reserve that we put funds into at the end of the prior year. With regard to the $856,000 that we anticipate putting into the Capital Reserve, that was discussed a number of times during the budget workshops, and also prior to that, when we were discussing how we were gonna utilize the funds that we budgeted in the current school year for the improvements to the student transportation, or if we were to build one in town, we budgeted over $3 million to build a bus yard in Wall Township. And when we made the decision that we were not going to be moving forward with that type of project, we reallocated those funds. And the largest project that we reallocated to was the HVAC project, or Phase 1 of the HVAC. We also have identified a number of paving projects at each of the schools that we anticipate completing this school year, as well as the improvements to the front porch at West Belmar. So the $856,000 that is included in there is what we anticipate being remaining or left over in our capital projects account, our facilities improvement account in the current year. So we anticipated that we're gonna have about $856,000 remaining, and what we always said when we included the funds for the transportation facility in the budget is that any unused funds are required to be placed back into the Capital Reserve account. So that's what that figure represents. If the district has additional funds available to them in June, the board will be making a decision on, with regard to the resolution, on where those funds go. We've, like we did in the prior year, we put funds from the benefit accounts into health benefits, so that they can go into the emergency reserve, so, again, they can offset any increases in health benefits in future years, just as we're doing in this current year. And the district, the board will have the ability to put any surplus or balances remaining at the end of the year into maintenance reserve, capital reserve, or to just let it to roll over into surplus, as we discuss each year in June.
Mr. Smythe, I know you handled it via email and also at the last budget meeting, but could you also just re, because you answered the email, but the HVAC issue?
Oh, okay.
I know it's not pertinent to the budget, but.
And with regard to the HVAC project, we received, I believe, four bids. The apparent low bidder had not submitted, as indicated in the resolution that was approved by the board, a list of approved subcontractors, as is required by statute. That was gonna be protested by the second low bidder. The first apparent low bidder was deemed to be non-responsive, because they did not submit their list of approved subcontractors. The apparent low bidder filed a suit, or what would be the proper terminology, Mr. Gross? Ordered a show cause. With, and basically protesting our award to the low bidder, Sonny Field, that went to court, and it was dismissed or determined to be in favor of the way the Board of Education awarded it. So the contract has been moving forward since it was awarded by the Board of Education, and we've had our first job meeting, and we still anticipate having the project completed prior to the start of school in September. And with regard to rationale provided for any Oprah requests or any documents provided with redactions, the rationale for the redactions is provided in the response, along with the documents that are provided. So the question as to why they were redacted was answered in the cover letter that was provided with the documents, as is required by the Open Public Records Act.
Just one other clarification. All the Oprah requests that we get are put online with the responses?
The request is put online, and the response cover letter with identifying the documents that are provided, and the reason or rationale, if there's any redactions, is provided on the website, as well as the number of documents that are provided, and the cost associated with it.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. Mrs. Dyer?
Yes, just a couple of comments. One of the questions was, what's happening with Latin? There are two Latin teachers in the budget. It appears that we have sufficient interest in Latin to continue with Latin. I did a survey prior to the break of the parents of children who are entering 6th grade and parents of children who are entering 9th grade. Parents of children entering 6th grade indicated that there were approximately 20 children who would be interested in taking Latin, so we'll be following up with them to see if the kids agree with their parents. And then we had about 10 students going into 9th grade who would be interested in taking Latin 1. Again, we're going to have to see how that works out, but the two Latin teachers that were in the budget as full-time teachers, there's no change being recommended there. With regard to the presentation this evening and information that's on the website, the tentative budget, which is 421 pages long and includes all of the budget detail, has been on the website since March 20. The presentation that I gave this evening is not yet on the website. So those of you who are referring to a presentation that you believe was posted this afternoon, I don't know exactly what you're looking at, but this presentation this evening is not yet on the website. Thank you. There were 50 copies printed for this evening, so there should certainly still be copies, unless people each took two.
So if I'm understanding at this point, you need somebody to make a motion for one of the resolutions, Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the agenda.
Three items on the agenda, 7, 8, and 9. Each of them is a resolution to approve the 1920 school budget. We have Board of Ed 1, Board of Ed 2, and Board of Ed 3. Board of Ed 1 is the budget with the 2% increase to the general tax levy, which is essentially the tentative budget that the board has previously approved. Board of Ed 2 is the budget with a 1.22% increase to the general tax levy, and Board of Ed 3 is the increase of 0.98% increase to the tax levy. If there's any questions on any of those, you know, we can, like, with regard to the specifics of each of those, we can go through it, but that's what was presented in the slide presentation. But otherwise, I would ask for a motion for one of these, and then we can discuss it once it's on the floor.
So then, any.
Excuse me, Mrs. Cross. Mrs. Cross.
So can I make a motion?
Yes, you can make a motion for any of them.
Can I make a motion for Resolution Number 8, BOE Attachment 2?
Okay. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So then, any questions or comments with regards to BOE 2, which is the. So then, any questions or comments with regards to BOE 2, which is the rendition of the budget at 1.22%? No questions?
This did include the $156,000 state aid, correct, that we were looking to do in the flexible, the maintenance account, I believe it was, we were talking about?
Yes, but it increases the amount of drawdown on the capital reserve so that all the capital projects are funded by a drawdown.
I just wanted to say that I feel that the items, line by line, in our budget, I thought were very well thought out. I think it's a really good budget. And I think that this 1.22% increase to the tax levy is a very sound way to go. It's a compromise between two extremes, and I think it provides enough security that we're keeping enough in our capital reserve, and that we have some other flexibility in terms of the additional state aid, keeping that in the budget for utilization for either maintenance or other things that may come up. And I just, I think it's the right thing to do. It sets us up for next year to be able to handle the increases that we're going to see next year. And I think it's a respectful way to approach the budget. I think it provides a, less of a tax burden that is more meaningful than a prior approach, and that's why I think it's a good budget.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment on the transportation. In transportation, what is being left out? In Wall Township, we have people who know the students, who are their neighbors, who know the families in town, who work in town, they know where the police are, they know when the stores open, they know when the stores close. So we're paying for that extra security. And just tonight, there was a bus attack in Howell Township. So I don't think we'll have that problem. But to tell me, somebody who doesn't know these people, and doesn't know the township, is going to do the right thing, that's all we see on the news. So I'm very comfortable with the transportation costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wondrack.
Can I just add to...
Please, Mrs. Cross, Mrs. Cross, now you're out of order. The board, the board, no.
I was talking about outsiders.
He didn't mention your name at all, and you're out of order, and I'm going to ask you one last time not to speak out, or I'm going to be asking you to leave, because we are conducting a meeting here, and you were given 10 minutes tonight.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Mrs. Wondrack, I just wanted to add to what you had to say, Ken, and I wholeheartedly agree. It's been a priority of mine individually, and the board collectively, to make sure that we maintain our bus staff in-house. And I think that portraying the deal with Howell as anything but a positive is really unfair and uninformed. It's a way to maintain our bus staff within the district, allows them to keep their jobs and provide the security for our students. It's cost-effective, and it gives us time to find a permanent solution in Wall Township, which is the ultimate goal, and not a very easy goal, because if you look at the properties that are along non-residential roads, they are all priority properties that have really high price tags, that are kind of out of, out of the board's reach. So it's going to take a lot of time, and some, I don't know, creative wheeling and dealing, and some maybe generosity of, you know, people who own properties, to get a place in Wall Township other than in a residential facility, area. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none.
Roll call, Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Mr. Wondrack?
No.
Ms. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Nope.
Ms. Connell?
Yes.
4-4.
I'd like to make a motion for BOE Number 3.
Second.
Questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, I have a question. So if we go with the lowest one, what happens next year, or the year after, or what happens if our health costs increase? What are our options at that point?
Well, what this will, as indicated in the presentation, there's a little over $600,000 in available bank cap that we're not using in the current year, that will be available next year, as well as any bank cap that is being generated by not going to the 2% tax levy cap in the current year, and whatever additional waivers that we qualify for in the current school year. So we would have the ability to use bank cap in the future if we needed to.
I just wanted to make a comment about BOE 3. This year, we're spending a whole lot of money on the air conditioning, $3 million plus. And I think just sometimes when you're spending a whole bunch of money, which is, I think, outside of the normal, you know, school budget, sometimes you have to tighten in other spots. I do think that, you know, this, sometimes when you have, you're spending a lot of money, you have to save in other places. And I think that that's why I like this BOE 3. That's just my comment.
Just to clarify, what are we saving?
Well, just for clarification, the difference between BOE 2 and BOE 3 with regard to funding of the capital projects, there is no difference. Under BOE 2 and BOE 3, the capital projects are being funded 100% by a drawdown in capital reserve. The difference between BOE 2 and BOE 3 is the application, or the use of the additional state aid that the district received in the amount of $156,800. So the difference between BOE 2 and BOE 3 is BOE 2 includes $156,800 in facility maintenance projects. And as was discussed, we can place it there for the flexibility to use for settlement costs with regard to negotiations with the WTEA. If we need those funds to fund any cost increases, or unanticipated costs, or costs that are not necessarily included in the budget to settle the contract, we have that flexibility. BOE 3 removes that $156,000 from the facility maintenance account, and reduces the general fund tax levy in additional $156,000. So it's not, so there's no difference between BOE 2 and 3 with regard to the capital projects and what the spending amount is. It's just what the, well, it is in the amount being spent. The general, the appropriation side reduces $156,000, as well as the revenue side. But with regard to the $3 million that we're budgeting with regard to capital projects, it has no effect.
So then, what would be the effect on any type of negotiations? Well, where would the money come from, I guess, is my question.
Any other questions or comments on BOE 3? Seeing none.
I don't, I don't think we should be discussing anything with negotiations at this meeting.
I agree.
And we've been doing this, and it should stop. Thank you.
Just as a comment, it's not that I'm discussing anything specific, I'm just concerned money-wise, where it leaves us with any type of cushion, that's why I was asking.
Okay, ready for a roll call? Ms. Malloy?
No.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Wondrack?
No.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
No.
Ms. Connell?
No.
You need 5 yes votes to pass the budget.
Well, there's one that hasn't been moved yet.
No.
No.
I don't think anybody's going to move, I don't think anybody's moving BOE 1. So, okay, so we need to pass a budget.
Sure do.
And if we don't pass a budget, it goes to the Executive County Superintendent to decide the budget. So I don't know about you guys, I'm not necessarily sure we should be giving up our agency in this decision. So let's hash it out.
Well, I'd like to say that if you look at capital reserve, and we're going to end, well, we started June 30th, 2018, with $3,782,795. That's taxpayer money. That's money that we collected from taxpayers that we put into a reserve account. So I think it's only right that we do use that money, and not go out for an additional 2% or 1.22%, because we already took that money. And that's where we have to be fiscally responsible. A .98, you know, if you, $156,000 for using it as a cushion, any type of cushion in a budget this size, is, it doesn't make a difference. It really doesn't. But where it makes a difference is that next year, 2% is based on that $156,000, and then the year after that, another 2% on top of the 2%, the compounding river that creates a budget that's now $77 million, and people being forced out of town. So I'm, I'm sticking with .98% because I think we're doing the right thing with the money.
But the capital reserve drawdown is the same for 1.22 or .98. The only difference is where we allocate the state aid.
Exactly, but it goes to that next year, if we use that, then 2% is based on that. And then the dangerous part of that is, our state is fiscally irresponsible, and I think if you talk to any sane person in the state, they will agree that at any given time, because if you look at similar school districts like ours, the state is taking away state aid. And the fact that we've gotten additional state aid, almost, I mean, not almost, it just doesn't make sense to me. So my concern is that, yeah, I want the best things in the world for us, but what happens next year when the state says, hey, we're taking back our $156,000, or more, which they might do? Because our state financially is in bad, bad shape, and it's not getting any better. So what do we do next year then, when the state comes and takes away the $156,000? Then we're in a bigger hole that we got to try to dig out of. So that's why I don't want to see that $156,000 used as part of the budget, because I think it's going to get taken away. And I think they're going to come back and chop more from us, because they've done that in the past. So that's a real concern that we have to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Adenizio. Does anybody else have anything that they want to ask, add? Mrs. Dyer, with regards to your presentation and the enrollment numbers at the elementary schools, I don't know if you're able to talk about this yet, but staffing needs, would you be moving teachers around if you have to increase the number of sections, or would you be needing to hire more teachers?
Looking at the average class sizes in the other grade levels, there really is not an opportunity to consolidate in any, you know, any grade level, any section, any building, in order to free up staff for additional kindergarten teachers. So it's, in all likelihood, it would be an increase. And then I would have to look to, you know, make adjustments elsewhere.
Okay. And so in the 1.22 iteration of the budget, that $156,000 could be used for salaries to hire new staff?
Yes, that would be one of the options.
But won't we also have possible breakage from people retiring, that additional money?
It's possible. The retirements that we already know about, though, are budgeted in the budget as step 1, so that would be retirements that we are not yet aware of. And, you know, people have told us in June that they're retiring, and have chosen, you know, not to give the district more notice than that, and that's certainly their prerogative. But I'm not aware of any, you know, anybody sort of in the pipeline who's thinking about that.
For the knowledge of this board and everybody who's joining us this evening, Mr. Gross has just informed me that we have until May 14th to vote on a budget. That would, but it can't be substantially different than anything that's been discussed here tonight. That would require us to have an additional meeting on our part. Our next scheduled board meeting is May 21st, and I'm not putting that out as something we should definitely do, I'm just letting you know that we have that avenue to travel down.
If you, for purposes of clarification, let me read from the Department of Education. "The last day to adopt the budget is May 14, 2019. The gap of time between the public hearing held by May 7 and the adoption date of May 14 is statutory and allows the board additional time to meet and adopt the budget after the public hearing on the budget has been held. To clarify, this gap does not give the board authority to make changes to the advertised budget, which were not specifically discussed in detail at the public hearing." So therefore, your three options would be what you are locked into at that point. "Any revenue and appropriation changes that were not discussed specifically and in detail at the public hearing shall not be included in the adopted budget, but you do have until May 14."
I said it before, I'll say it again, I'm not comfortable without that cushion. Obviously, we may have to need more staff, there could be things in negotiations and unknown things that we have. And at .98%, we're just creating more bank cap that we can pull on later on, down the line. And that compounds the other way, too. It happened in the past, we had to take bank cap, that was left on the table. For altruistic reasons, I understand it, but, you know, it's the harsh reality. This is not cheap, and to be fiscally responsible, sometimes it does cost a little bit of money. I mean, we're all taxpayers here, we all understand the burden.
And just to be clear, so as it creates more bank cap, then next year, actually, we have a 2% cap, you can actually go above it by using bank cap, correct?
Correct.
So where does this leave us? Draw straws? Flip coins? Vote again a few times?
We can continue to vote. We can table the conversation to a different date, we can...
That's not an option.
Continue to talk here. You know, we, we have a couple of options.
Can I add a comment?
Yes.
So our tentative budget was at 2%. The tax levy was at 2%. And so with further board discussion, the administration provided us two other options after hearing what board members had to say, and those are at 1.22 and 0.98. And we have eight members who are sitting here, who have differences of opinion, and who have different people in the community that they hear from. And there are pros and cons to funding things and not funding things. And I think that part of being on the board is learning how to, and being willing to come to a consensus, and that means that not, that probably no... to a consensus. And that means that not, that probably nobody is happy, but can live with the decision that's being made. I think the 1.22% is a very fair compromise. The difference to the taxpayer on an average home is $6.56. And I think the value to the district is way more than that in terms of flexibility and options, depending on what unknowns come down the road in terms of anything, whether it's staffing or facility issues. And so, I, I think it really is in the best interest of all concerned to pass the BoE number two.
And I'd like to disagree, because you say consensus, but it's a consensus that you want, which I think is unfair. So, there's no compromise that you'll even consider a lower one. It's that you felt that the 1.22 is the best. So,
No, Ralph, you're forgetting that, that I approved the 2%. So, that's where the compromise, that's where the compromise
Right. And I voted no to the 2%.
Yes.
So, be clear on that.
I understand that. And I voted yes on the 2%.
And to say that the difference is $6.56, no, the, the real thing is you're still taking $63.19 or $56.63 from someone. And I can tell you, that means something to people in the community. You know, we're doing pre-referendum, sitting through, meeting architects and, and all this stuff to go to the taxpayer and say, hey, we want to take some more of your money because we need things. And, you know, you want to argue over $156,000. You know, why would, you know, you look at the newspaper, and every week, we're getting blasted. You look online, we're getting blasted. You know, like, the Last Coast Star article, I thought was horrible. Because I'm certainly not a person that won't answer questions if I know the answer to it. But, but yet, the board's unresponsive. So, this is an opportunity for us to be a little responsive at least and say, hey, you know what? We're looking down the road because we need to do improvements, and we know we need improvements. But we're taking into consideration what's going on today and the effects of this budget on people today. So, I'm not going to waver on my, on my vote of .98% because I think that's more than fair. It's still funding everything. And we're doing it using money that, that, again, state aid that we got, that I believe the state's going to take from us. And in addition, money that we've already collected from taxpayers, and whether it's from not spending everything or some budgets being slightly over, over, over fat with money. You know, we could argue those points, but it doesn't even matter. It's still money that we collected from the taxpayer, and we're using it correctly. So, I'm not wavering on it. That's my compromise, because I think this is the responsible thing to do.
Can I add thirty seconds of time I didn't get? Public comments over, Mrs. Duran. I'm sorry. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just for the record, I don't think that we're unresponsive. I think that a lot of questions are answered. It's just that some people don't like the answers, or they don't always know where to find the answers. But I, I don't think that we're unresponsive. I feel like most questions that come up are answered.
Well, but, I mean, public perception and newspaper articles, that kind of spells a different story, which I personally find troublesome. I, I don't like that. You know, certainly unfair to people that are, that are certainly willing to answer questions. I mean, I don't necessarily think anybody is unwilling to answer questions. I mean, there's certainly plenty of answer, questions that are posed that I certainly don't know all the answers to. I'll never know all the answers to it. But I just, in the public perception, there's a serious problem with us, and that needs to be fixed. It has to get turned around, turned around. And, you know, budget, 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 money, that's what is on everybody's tongue. And, you know, that's just how I feel.
So, then you think if we go to the .98%, the, the public perception of us being responsive is going to change?
No. No, I think, no, I think that's, no, I think that's maybe one step in the right direction. But you also have to look long-term. We're talking about a referendum. First, I want to admit, we have boilers that are 80 years old. We have a track that you can't run on. I mean, you know the list. We've talked about it a million times. There's things that we do need to do. So, how do you go out and sell a referendum to a public that you constantly go to? Every year, we argue 1.22, .98%, 2%, 2%. I mean, you look at the, the budget's gone up, like, 11, 13% in the last four year, five years, six years? I think six years? I mean, that's a lot. I don't know anybody's salary that's gone up that much in the last six years. So, I mean, when you, when you start looking at the scales of things, I mean, you got to take a step back and say, hey, you know what? As much as you want to do it, and I certainly understand the argument of more money, because there's certainly other things that we can do. But the other side of it is that it has real-life consequences.
I don't disagree with that. But, I mean, again, running a household, somehow, my budget goes up every year. Every year, everything goes up. My utilities go up, my cable vision goes up, my food bills go up, you know, my benefits go, everything goes up every single year. So, I'm assuming it's the same here. The price of everything goes up. So, basically, you know, we're at a 4-4 here.
I understand
But there are people that don't get the increases to meet that. There are senior citizens that can't meet it. There are young families that can't meet it.
Absolutely. I get it. There are people that can't meet their bills right now. I, I understand that. I completely understand that. I mean, if we really feel that this much of a difference is, is going to make the difference in the lives of people, you know, let's re-vote.
But, no, but it's just not
No, let's re, well, listen.
Don't worry, but it's just not today. That, that
It's not just today.
$156,000 is going to be there for eternity. So, so, it will be, because, well, no, because it's in, if you vote for it this year, it's in the budget next year. Because when was the last time a budget was ever cut? Brian said, if we had a 0% increase, taxes would still go up $30 on the average assessed house. I honestly didn't ever realize that until he said that at the last meeting. And, and that's because the way the school year runs and with the budget and everything, I, I understand that. But even at 0%, somebody would still be looking at a $30 increase. So, there's, there's no, there's no way to prevent increases in, in this. I mean, unless you shrank the school down, you had a million kids in one class, which is not practical. So, it's, it's watching every dime and, and making sure you're doing the, the best thing that's in front of you. We can't, we can't necessarily gauge what benefits will be next year or the year after that, or five years down the road. You know, maybe three years from now, we're going to have to go into the state health benefits plan, because that'll work out to be better. The previous, I don't know, 10, 15 years, it hasn't been, and we've saved a lot of money on it. But we, we don't know. And so, so we can't necessarily say that we, we have to worry about what's going to happen next year or the year after. We certainly should be mindful of it. And, and again, the, the way the state with taking, giving and taking money, I think that's something that, that is probably more on the forefront. We have to worry about the state aid. But it's, it's what's in front of us right now. And are we doing the, the best thing for everybody?
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Just to keep the dialogue going. So, I, I understand your point about the concern with the state aid, because I am on the other end of that, obviously. So, I understand that. And then, I think both you and Chris made comments about the .98 maybe being a more viable option right now as we enter into this discussion about referendum. So, then my question, I guess, to you would be, is if we came to a consensus on .98, are you, are you willing then to march forward and fight as vehemently for the referendum as you are fighting for this .98 budget then?
If, yes, with a caveat to that. It, it depends what we're fighting for. So, if we're, if, if we're going to, I couldn't even, if, if we're saying, we need boilers, and, and boilers make sense because they're 90 years old, and then that's going to be, make the schools more efficient, and we're going to save money that way? Absolutely. If we're talking about a turf field in the mix of everything, I would have to take a step back and see if that's actually the, the best thing for this particular kind of referendum. So, I think the key for a referendum for us personally, looking at what other districts have done, is that you can't mix apples and oranges. So, you can't say, we need roofs, we need boilers, we need, well, right. So, so, I think you can't mix those things. I think you have to attack one specific thing. So, for me, facilities would be, would be a big thing. You know, boilers. Last night, with the architects, we heard some interesting things about solar, you know, which could benefit us. You know, going in that direction.
I'm going to cut you off really quick, though, because I think one of the most important things we heard from them was the value of community input. And so, I think if the community does argue that we need to mix the apples and the oranges, we do need to listen to that.
Yes. So, and, and I agree with you. So, that is another dialogue that sometimes you get steered in a direction that you don't expect to go. And certainly, I, I wouldn't say that I'd be 100% against something like that. If, if everybody here was saying, hey, we think that's a good idea to mix the apples and oranges, then, okay, that, that's fine. But I think, seeing how other referendums in other districts have fared, I think, and especially in this district, you're looking at the history of it, I think we need to be very specific. We, we have to do an incredible job, beyond incredible, explaining what the needs are. You know, I would say, you know, when we get to that point, we have tours of the buildings. You know, walk the people into the boiler rooms and say, this is our boiler that's 90 years old or whatever it is. This is why, you know,
We don't have any 90-year-old boilers.
Well, no, no.
All right, can we vote again? Can we vote again? Pick one and let's vote.
First, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to vote on, on three.
I'll second.
Three is the .98% iteration of the budget. You're welcome. Any questions or comments on Ms. Malloy's motion? And Ralph's second. Seeing none.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondra?
Yes.
Ms. Swanier?
No.
Mr. Adnizio?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
No.
Ms. Malloy?
Dun, dun, dun. Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, motion carries, and we have a budget. Mazel tov. And now for everybody's favorite part of the evening. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Wait, hold on. As per the resolution in the agenda, and action may be taken? And no action will be taken.
I'll make that motion still.
I need a second. All in favor?